...for two thousand and fifteen, seven o'clock, the Elmet City Hall. Do we have a first? Motion. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Lynn County Sheriff's Department, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Bezinski with Lynn County Sheriff's Office submitting the calls for service for the month of October. Actually, the period of October eighth through November twelfth. We had fourteen calls for service here that were logged. I generated sixty point nine hours of the required forty-three hours. The contract. Any questions or concerns?
On the tobacco sting, did everybody pass okay?
Um, I'm not, I know throughout the county that night we issued five citations, so I, I don't know if one of those was located in Albernet or not.
Any other questions for him? You're free to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Crime Fire Department?
I had nine calls for service in October. We had three PR events, we had a homecoming parade, fire drill, the school. Kids came down to visit the fire station. We had two football standbys, one medical, one town. One medical in township, to neutralize fire, the Unimosa, and a field fire in the township. And then December fifth is Saturday, where we get some stuff for again from the five thirty to seven. And do you guys know, you guys are getting a Christmas tree again for down there? I heard rumor there was somebody wanting to cut down from Keel's farm, but I don't know. Maybe sharing this.
I've been told in, in, yeah, that that is happening, that Bill Keel has one actually behind his house, that uh...
I know.
Yep, yep, and they were, because they were asking me if the Christmas tree stand that we have would hold it and, near as I can tell, it will. I haven't gone to look at it yet, but they told me approximately how big the trunk was. So, yeah, I think there's one coming. I just don't know when.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was just word.
Oh, yeah, no, it's...
I still gotta find out tonight.
I think it's a done deal.
It's all good.
Okay, questions for the tire department? Okay, you're in on it?
I'd say you're up. I guess the only thing I had is that Moot Heart, I don't know if you were gonna talk about that.
Yeah, I had it in my, but go ahead. I mean, I can, I'll just start by saying Matt and I discussed that Moot Heart is getting really bad. Bethany told us her experience last meeting and, and uh, I don't think Dan has been out, he hasn't given me anything anyway, as far as just maybe trying to patch the worst of it. But I discussed with Matt, maybe we oughta have some numbers available to us to replace, to repair and, and uh, you know, topcoat it with asphalt, or to completely replace it and replace the four inch water main that is there. If you're gonna tear the street out, that'd be the time to do the water mains, so.
So, yeah, my estimate here is just, is for a reconstruct. I was looking at it this morning here and that west side is, is really bad. And I think asphalt would be, you'd end up patching near half of it.
Just to take an asphalt off.
Just to put an, I mean, you wanna put asphalt, what you, already existing right now, because it is
Broken too bad.
Broken pretty bad. I mean, you, you could do it, it just could be more of a Band-Aid until till maybe you save up some more money for a, a bigger project. Now, I think, especially from like the school entrance, entrance to the west, that, that's, it's really bad there. And then even from that school entrance to the east, you know, a couple hundred feet there. It's, it's not too bad from like Main Street. Eight hundred feet west of the main, but um, it's... I, I think you're gonna end up, to get a good, good product, you're gonna, if you want asphalt, you're gonna have to patch everything below it. Even, I even noticed a few of the patches that were ass, or concrete patches that were done in the past, and even those are cracking, so I think there probably needs to be a little more rock base there, I'm guessing. So, I mean, if, if you asphalt over it, that's all gonna end up cracking right through your, your asphalt at some point, so. So, that's why I, I, I don't, I, at this point, I only have just a, the reconstruct number, and that does include water main. The sanitary sewer along there has all been lined. So, you shouldn't have to do anything with sanitary sewer. The water main is all four inch, so if you're gonna tear the street up, I recommend replacing the water main along there to a six inch. Third has, has already been done a couple of years ago, so you could tie into that and then run Main Main Third. Storm sewer, there's some, some sewer on the, on the east side there. Four intakes on the east side. So, I would recommend you're tearing, if you're tearing, reconstructing the street, you can replace the intakes and then that would go. So, that's what the estimate is, you have six hundred and sixty-two thousand, so it's, it's not cheap. And that is from Main Street all the way over to, you know, where the Naylor addition starts, the
Over to Third Avenue.
Yeah, even beyond, to the west of the Third Avenue a little bit.
You know how it widens right there where, where...
I'd say that intersection there is pretty bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would at least take it to the intersection, that section between uh, sorry, I've had enough for everyone here, but kind of an idea.
It's where it used to dead end down there.
Yeah, yep, so I kinda, I put a measurement on there. Just a quick one off the internet there. You know, that, that section to the west of Third is not too bad, but it, it does widen out, seems to hit, I guess the street, the majority of the street there is all, I guess it's all twenty-four foot back to back. And then it's the Naylor addition, it widens out to, I believe, twenty-eight.
Yeah, so you're talking about going back in twenty-eight all the way?
All the way through.
Yeah.
Why, so you'd be widening the street. What my estimate here is including widen twenty-eight all the way through.
So, in other words, it would be twenty-eight all the way from?
From Main Street all the way to, to the addition. You could get away, and that, like I said, that little section here on the west is not too bad, and you could probably leave it, but it just, you'd have a short little section of twenty-four foot wide street. If you just wanted to go to the intersection of, of Third.
You're talking about just widening it from the Naylor addition to Third?
All, all, whole thing.
All the way to Main? Cause that is the narrowest street that we have in town, by the strong drive, you know?
Is that gonna disrupt anybody's property or anything, if we do that extra?
Obviously, you'll be taking in, you'll be going in, you'll still be within the city driveway.
Be just two feet on each side.
Two feet, yeah, you, you keep the same center line, most likely. You're just, you'd have to tie back in driveway, obviously, so that, to the driveways, make it work. To get probably, I have like about ten feet of driveway replacement for each driveway. Just to elevation line, make it all work. I do have sidewalks on both sides too, so I mean, I just, that can, and right now you only have, there's a sidewalk on the whole north side there. There's nothing on the, a short section on the south.
Yeah, a little bitty, two houses worth.
That's by the sidewalk on both sides?
My estimate includes both sides, but right now you only have none on the north.
Yes, question. Sidewalks go from the city property on the homeowners? Or is it supposedly on our driveway, east? You, you know what I'm saying? On each side of the road, proper, the city property is, you know, in a grass area.
Yeah.
And are the sidewalks normally located on the city area? Now, you're gonna take, now you're gonna take two feet, so now we're gonna put these sidewalks, you're gonna be really close to the road, yeah?
No, what we, what we doing is taking um, the sidewalk is saying the same, same spot, but you'll take the disc, the, the ball bar between the sidewalk and the back.
Right. But you're gonna be taking two feet off, so you're moving the sidewalks closer to the street.
No, you leave sidewalk right where they're at.
The distance would change.
There'll be less distance between.
Exactly. The sidewalks are gonna be closer to the street. I didn't say that correctly.
Excuse me. You're right, you're right. Yep.
Which, it wouldn't be what, two feet closer on, on each side?
And typically a sidewalk would be within like a foot of the property line, but it's kind of a, it'd give you enough room that if you needed seeing these repaired, they can stay as a driveway, not, you know, five or five feet. I mean, there, there's room within the driveway there if you need.
Right.
I don't, I didn't really go through like the sidewalk conditions right now with the north sides, I mean, that's potentially, you could leave it. But usually when you're reconstraining the street, by the time you tear everything up, you end up replacing the sidewalks anyway.
Are these sidewalks in eighty day, or what is it?
Eighty, eighty. Yeah, you put them all back in, at, right now?
No, no, when we put them in.
You put it back in eighty, yeah, yeah.
And so the width becomes wider than what we probably have.
You can still do four, four foot line.
It can do four.
Yeah, you just have, you have, you have to have a five foot turnaround, passing zone every five hundred feet or whatever it is, but you can use driveways to meet that.
Those are my two questions.
The only thing maybe you could possibly, I can foresee is, is slope down there on the east end. You could have too much slope to meet the ADA requirements. They might have to do a little dirt work to take that sidewalk down more gradually, to turn the corner, to go onto the street possibly.
With the city being on, on that south side of, I would think you'd want a sidewalk on the south side.
No, I'm, I'm not arguing sidewalks, I'm just asking if this quote has those things in it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and your main, you said, is four inch, is it cast iron, is that right?
Right, um, I assume, I'm assuming it's four inch down, yeah. I have, in the estimate, I have included a six inch PVC to replace the hydrants. I believe the hydrant's already been replaced on Third, so really we're just have to go adding maybe two hydrants, and then one mid-block, and then one on Main Street. But like, I mean, but like, these are, are all pretty, preliminary at this point, you know, so it would go it could still change quite a bit, depending on what you have to find out there, but it is pretty bad shape. I didn't, I didn't realize, especially on that south side of the street, it's, you know, it's really kind of buckling in there, so.
And that's why I asked Matt to look at it. It's a problem that's not gonna go away anytime soon, and, you know, we all knew it was bad. Bethany's comment last meeting about the concrete coming out made me look a little harder at it, and that's when I, we talked about it, because it's, it is really breaking up pretty bad, so. It's gonna have a tough snowplow winter, that street is, cause I'm afraid we're gonna peel some chunks in a couple of places if we're not careful, so. Unless we can get one of those lovely wet, heavy snows that packs down and never comes up right off the bat.
So, that, this is more, okay.
What's this adjustment of existing structures?
That would be just the manholes, so if I can replace the manholes, if the street elevation's not exactly what, what currently is, if it's a little bit higher, a couple inches higher, we'll adjust the manhole, just to make, to meet the new elevation of the road. So, yeah, this is, you know, I'm looking for anything, I just, just, there's more, the guy brought it up, and I, it's, it's budgetary, long, long-term planning, however you wanna look at it, but either that, or you want.
A lot more legwork before we can make an informed decision, but we gotta have a base to start with, and this throws us, gives us that base to start with.
Yeah. And it's still possible to asphalt it, you just want, you just spend a little more time figuring out which panels of concrete that you need to patch before you asphalt it. And look at the, which sections of curb that you probably want to potentially replace before you asphalt it over it. And it's certainly possible, it's not gonna last as long as a new concrete street would, but you can definitely get some more life out of it.
We just also have to look at the, at the future, you know, we all know what broke that thing up, all the trucks on it from the school project, and, you know, on the street that was never intended to handle that. And I think most, everybody felt, well, that'll be a long time before we see that traffic again. Well, they're not going in and out of that entrance too much, but the school is building again, you know, and if, if the numbers continue to raise there, who knows, maybe there's gonna have to be a wing or something back there on that backside, and if we, you know, I mean, we need to look at everything, but if we throw an asphalt overlay on that thing and wind up with that kind of heavy traffic again, then did we just throw that money away? But, I mean, we need to look at it all, but just throwing that out there too, looking into the future, if you're gonna spend money on that street, what could happen? What kind of load could we put on it possibly?
I don't have any else left, you guys have any? Anybody got any questions, buddy? And once, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Darren.
Okay, my name's Darren, I live on one thirty Howard Street. I'm here tonight to ask you to change the city code by removing the chickens from the list of restricted agriculture animals and consider them the same as other domesticated pets. I became interested in chickens after talking to Kelly Cannon Lane, who has chickens in her backyard in Marion. Kelly also teaches classes for the chickens in urban areas, along with her husband, and they have a blog, The Sustainable Couple, which I encourage all of you to check out, and we have that information provided for you. We purchased the chicks at Tyson's and raised them in the house, and tell they, they were big enough to go outside. I then built a coop that's nice, nicely between the shed and the garden and the backyard. The chickens, they're real friendly, they follow us around the yard as we're outside doing yard work. They put themselves to bed at night. They, they are very low in noise, and they don't seem to cause a problem, and I haven't had any issue with any of the neighbors around. In hindsight, we went about this the wrong way. It did occur to us that we'd be able to keep a small number of chickens in the backyard, because of Marion and Cedar Rapids, where in the media regarding the good news that the ordinance is, had been passed to allow up to six hens. But we should have thought to check this out, so I do apologize for that. Since we've had the chickens, though, we've shared eggs with the neighbors, and to the best of my knowledge, none of them have any issues with the chickens. When I received a letter from the city, I found a home for them, which I hope will be temporary, after review of the information. Explain the benefits of the urban chickens, which, which are included in the packets.
Thank you.
For some information and copies of the ordinances and surrounding communities.
And I could read the information here, but you guys have it right in front of you there.
But the benefits.
The benefits are there. These are just a few of the benefits. We provided more comprehensive overview in these packets we'd like you to review. We also included the websites where the city can apply for grants. Also in the packets are information Kelly has shared with us and research we have done. We found that Mount Vernon, Ely, Marion, Benton, Iowa City, Lisbon, and Cedar Rapids all have adopted or amended ordinances allowing up to six chickens. The ordinances address all these issues that need to be considered, including obtaining a permit, which generates revenue for the city, enclosure requirements, cleanliness, reduction of attraction of predators and rodents, and no roosters, which we wholeheartedly agree on. Cause they're noisy, the rooster would be very noisy. We look forward to continue this discussion at the next meeting, and we'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have regarding urban chickens after review of the material, and thank you for your time.
Just some information that we gathered, these roosters should be done for surrounding communities.
Any questions, Darren?
Sharon has done some research on ordinances stuff too, and so, knowing that you guys are gonna be here, so I don't, we don't have that, but she's got some resources she's done, and I wanna say thank you for, for removing them when we sent the letter, that's, that's very kind. A lot of people wouldn't, so.
We should have checked in hindsight, I didn't think about it, but we should have, so, you know, we apologize for that.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
But, yeah, they're my pets, I gave them names, they follow me around. I miss them, they're good chickens, they're good eggs.
Are you aware, are there any other neighbors up there that are contemplating this?
Uh, not to my knowledge, there is not.
So, they're right at this time, and I'd be truthful in saying that you're the only person in town right now that's interested in this. Is that true?
Lately, probably.
As far as I know, yeah.
I was just curious, so.
Thank you for all the information.
Thanks.
Thank you for considering letting us have them.
Thank you.
Would you guys like on next week's agenda?
Yes.
Oh, not next, next month? Yeah, I think he corrected, I didn't. I was like, yeah, next week, we could be here next week.
That's how fast a month goes.
I know, it does, they do.
Okay, moving on then, we'll thank you, and we'll move on in to Elmet Lions Club.
I don't think anybody's here except me. You guys have probably seen the progress, they're flying right along. At our meeting Tuesday night, we have collected, don't hold me to the number, but nearly thirty-two thousand dollars, the, the grants, and we got the Tyson's grant, which was two thousand dollars. We were hoping, could have been as much as five, but we got two thousand. The other support from people in town has just kept rolling in, and so, and the Methodist Church came up with two thousand dollars on their own for us, so we're, we're getting darn close to our goal, may not need little or no assistance from the city. Depending on how Dan's bill comes out, you know, we won't know until we, until we see the final from him, for sure, but his estimate was thirty-six something, I think, the last one that we got from him, so. Stone City did a nice, gave us a nice break on the rock, just cause it was a community project, and there was seven, eight hundred dollars worth of savings there, so it's really rolling. I got railroaded into doing an interview for KCRG this afternoon, cause I, Jim Carver, I need to thank him personally for that, but anyway. So, hopefully I represented the city and the Lions Club well, they came out to a story on the trail, so. She did not tell me when it would be on.
How are they gonna tie that into the, on the first approach? They're gonna put asphalt there, or are they gonna?
You mean right here, the very first?
Right.
That, we tried to do the best possible scenario of how to leave it to give options, not knowing, you know, what, if anything that the homeowners in that area would be able to do as far as putting a sidewalk in, so just to, you know, probably bank it up with dirt to make it so it's not a drop-off for now, and just try and, I don't know, maybe use some of the leftover rock to, to meet it for use in the time being, till we see what might happen there, so. That was kind of a, you know, he showed up totally unexpected, he gave us no warning, and all of a sudden he's up there ready to pour, so it was kinda like, uh, okay, do whatever you think is best, stop about here, cause that's kinda roughly the property line, or, you know, whatever, and, and just looking at the terrain and, and where it could possibly connect to a sidewalk, that's why he did it the way he did it, so. But we'll have to, yeah, make it, make an approach somehow usable, once it dries up enough, he can do a little dirt work and...
There's a two yards there, it won't, then there doesn't have a sidewalk?
Yeah, and then a little chunk of field, and so, Dave Reed has, I talked to him the other day, he is, his sidewalk goes, is there, but it's bad. He said he's gonna replace his, so. But then we go from there, I guess, see what happens, so.
Okay, at this time, entertaining anybody wishing to speak? Five minutes? If there's no one, then we'll go ahead and move to approve what consent agenda. Do you know if there's any extra bills?
I don't think so, cause there's a couple that she usually gets late, actually showed up on time. She didn't tell me of any. So, there's what I have. And the mail that we've gotten since Sharon's been gone, I don't think there's anything there that needs attention till she gets back, so.
So, with that, are we gonna have an approval of the consent agenda? Then Mr. May, all those in favor, or, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, do business, city maintenance report.
Many of you may know, we had a water main break right by the water tower here a few days ago. That was a shocker. I flipped the pump on to, uh, let it run for a while to test chlorine, and locked out the door, and it just came squirting right up through the driveway, so. Pierce Tobin, I called them, they had a crew that hadn't left yet, and they came right there. That was approximately six thirty in the morning, and it was tied up, done, eleven thirty. So, it went very well. It was a six inch line. And the emergency locate went good, they were there right away and marked everything out, and no, nothing unusual about it, just a hole right in the bottom of the pipe, and so, we had to kill the tower. Kevin Shute came and helped, because he had some pressure relief valves that we could put on the, the fire hydrant, so, cause we had to kill the tower, so that meant, in order to keep pressure in the lines, I needed to have the, I turned wellhouse three on and left it on, so we used his pressure relief valve on the hydrant by the water tower to release any excess pressure, opened another hydrant down by the vet's office, just in case, kind of a backup pressure release, and, and it couldn't have gone any better, really. And that valve that Kevin has is slick. I've got a couple of our suppliers looking for them, but evidently that's not something that gets used very often anymore. So, they're, they're trying to, to look for me, we'll see, but.
They used to, many times they do like, when they painted our water tower, you know, water towers and stuff, they put one down the vets and one the other, and then they use the city wells, pretty much like a demand pump.
Yeah, yeah, well, and see, the thing is, this valve, like, I, I even kept Kevin's for a while, and I took it down to Schimbert's, and they're like, I, I don't know what that is, and they got online and started looking around all their suppliers, and no, I don't see anything like that, and it was weird, because the couple of the Pierce Tobin guys knew about them, and Kevin obviously had one, and it's just strange, but so far I haven't been able to put my hands on one, but I thought it'd be kinda nice to have one, if, you know, this happens again, cause that was a learning lesson, and maybe it wouldn't happen again anytime soon, but so I'm kinda looking there. I, it, I can't imagine it'd be terribly expensive, but I'm kinda looking for one after this project, so. Other than that, the water's been going good. Had chlorine hose feeding the, going from the tank to the ejector brake the one day, which is no big deal, cause no chlorine escapes unless there's suctions, just, we didn't chlorinate for about two hours. Minor little things like that, nothing, no problems. Moving into the sewer system, they, for all intents and purposes, have Donald Drive done, tiny little bit of concrete left to pour. And they'll be digging tomorrow morning on lorry, they've cut the concrete where they need to tear it out. And so they'll probably be starting in on lorry and getting that done. The pipe came out, as expected, crushed and, and looking pretty, pretty crappy, and little or no rock bedding under. The pipe came out as expected, crushed and looking pretty crappy and little or no rock bedding under. Absolutely none around the pipe and, and very little under it. And so that was exactly what we expected to find after seeing the damage from the camera. So the, and I informed most of you as we've gone along, but the concrete's gonna get expensive on the project because they can't compact this soil. So a lot of the concrete that got pulled out had to also have, be cored out dirt wise and then rock replaced in order to get a decent base underneath it. And then on top of that, as in the areas where the storm sewer was the deepest and they had to cut further into the street in order to be safe in the trench. As soon as they did that, they had to drive their trucks on the other portion of the concrete to get the dirt removed and bring the rock in. And it just disintegrated in that center portion of the street. So it, the Donald Drive is more or less new for about a hundred and twenty feet at least. And there's no getting around it, cause it just disintegrated. So it's definitely gonna, gonna add to our cost. They're doing the best they can to keep it, the concrete replacement to a minimum everywhere else that they can. And there's a couple areas that still need attention, but I'm hoping I could try to do either mud jacking or this new polyurethane lifting. Cause there's a couple of good slabs real close to your house that are settled. And I'm thinking if we can just lift those babies up a little bit, we can get a lot more years out of them, rather than having them tear them up and replace them. So we definitely need to be prepared for extra expense on the project. All of the crossovers were compromised, we got, one of their men went down the hole and looked. And every single one of the pipes going across the street had damage of some sort, was either smashed or the joints were out of wax. So all four of those are getting, getting replaced too. So that already takes us up to what our quote maximum was looking like. And so now with extra concrete, it's gonna be above what we had talked about, which was around a hundred and sixty thousand. So I have no idea how to estimate it, but don't be surprised if we see a number with a two in front of it by the time we've done this extra concrete, so. And I've been trying to salvage concrete and they've been talking, talking me out of it to a degree. After they show me why, I have to tend to agree, you know, they got the couple of panels that were decent with thirty foot of new concrete on each end. And, you know, I finally caved and said, yeah, go ahead and replace them because, you know, if we go to all the work to pin them, put the new concrete in, two completely separate pores, et cetera. And then they break, a year from now, we're gonna be sorry we did that, so. Anyway, that's how that operation has been going. I gotta say, the crew has been doing an outstanding job on keeping everybody in and out of their houses, you know, with their garages as quickly as possible. I think been very courteous on letting everybody pass, so I've been really happy with that. And Leroy, the foreman, does a really good job of keeping me up to date on, on everything that's been going on, so. Spent considerable time a couple of weeks ago getting our empty DES wastewater permit application in. That's kind of a biggie, once every five years or so, depending on how the DNR does their work, whether we get the new permit right away or not. Has to be done right, et cetera. Got it done in the nick of time, I had to wait on, I had to drive two extra water samples to Newton to get processed. Cause they found out our lab in Waterloo won't do it, the one in Newton is the only one that will do it. So I thought I had them sent in in plenty of time, but I didn't, so drove them down to Newton, came back fine, everything was good there. So when I talked to the DNR about some questions I had, he referenced our permit application as a cupcake. We're looking for cupcakes, he said, we're, we've got plenty of hard ones, yours is pretty easy, it's a cupcake, don't worry, it should be fun, so. Hopefully that's the case and we get a new permit in a reasonable amount of time. But our old one does not expire until April. So it just, they want the application in this far ahead, my deadline was November second to have it in. So it is submitted and accepted and should be good to go there. Finally got Lagoon One drained down far enough to put the new valves in, we wound up putting four in. When we tried to operate the two valves and they don't get used very often, which is a shame, but they need to be there. There's two valves that would hold water in the, in the manhole, that's in between cell one and cell two. The two that let the sewage out of one into the manhole to go down the hill to two or three were the ones that were causing me fits. And in an effort to get everything as empty as I could, I tried to shut off the other two, which would just hold that sewage from going down to two and three. They wouldn't close on the way. So I told them, get those valves too and put them in while you're here, because that is our only backup. If a valve fails for the water coming out of one and you can't get a valve shut, it's gonna go down the hill to two or three if we can't close those valves. Like I said, they almost never get operated, but they need to be there. So it turned into a four valve job instead of a two valve, so. But Pierce Tobin got in the day that the water quit flowing and got it done and there was no issues or incident whatsoever. So that all went very well. Now on the lift station, we had a pump, let me start from the beginning. Iowa Pump came to do maintenance. I think you know part of the story, but they pulled the first one, got the maintenance done, put it back in the hole. Second one they pulled out, it had a rag in it, it had taken the seal out of the pump. I went to get the backup pump to put in the hole. Before I got back, they were scrambling to put the damaged pump back in because for some reason pump number one would not run. And come to find out, it was a broken wire in the cabinet inside, they got bumped and that's why it wouldn't run. So eventually they found it, but by then they had stuck the damaged pump back in the hole and, cause it was still operational, it would still pump. So they pumped the pit down, figured out it was the wire. So we ran for a couple of weeks on the, just on pump number one. And then they were able to come back and they put our backup pump in, in place of pump number two and it's functioning fine. So we've got the freshly maintenance pump in the hole and our, our new backup that we had purchased. They took the KSB pump, one of the originals, down to their shop and then called me back and said that it was not unreparable, but not cost efficient to repair. It was gonna cost roughly eighty to eighty-five percent of a new pump, they recommended putting a new pump in. Also while they were there putting that backup pump in, we pumped the pit down lower than it would normally go. And the guy's looking in and he says, oh, look at that, check valve's bad. While the water was gushing down through the check valve, through the pipe, when we pumped the, pumped the pit down. And so he recommended on the spot that we put new elbows in down below where the pumps attach. Switched to his company's type of elbows, because they just work better, in his opinion. And put a solid guide rail system in to put the pumps in and out, because the ones that we have are cable system. And, and I don't think anybody will disagree that the solid guide rails, it'd be a better system. And so they sent me an estimate to do that work and that included changing the two check valves too. And the estimate for that work would be fifty-one hundred dollars. Now, in the meantime, they were concerned that the backup pump that we put in the hole was exactly the right specifications for our application. So they, we were, I was looking through records trying to find specs on our KSB pumps, which were the originals, cause their backup pump was a different brand. So anyway, I can't find anything, I called the KSB dealer to get information, started talking to him a little bit about what we got going on. He asked if he could come take a look, I think, which was a very good deal. He got here, we pumped the pit down, so I could show him the check valves leaking, check valves weren't leaking. I think, I think the check valve had something in it that day, we pumped that pit down one time and I think there was something in it. And it made it let water back that particular day. And so. He suggested, the KSB dealer, which is Quality Flow, he suggested, you know what, I don't really think you need to put check valves in. If you wanna switch to a guide, a guide rail, a solid guide rail, we'd absolutely help you do that. And he also explained why our attachment system, the other companies don't like. It's because they don't really understand how to put it in and out, they do it wrong. Because Iowa Pump Works was giving us static about those rubber washers, Dave, you know, they always fall out when you take them in and out. Well, the KSB guy showed me how you take it in and out and how you keep the gasket from falling out. So I don't, I, let's just say I got educated that day. First of all, he said, I don't think you need check valves, they're expensive and they rarely fail and they're holding just fine right now. We pumped it down three times while he was there and it held all three times. And then also, he gave me a price on a replacement pump. In the meantime, I got a place, a price on a replacement pump from Iowa Pump Works. And the KSB is not that much cheaper. Iowa Pump for their pump wants sixty-four seventy-six and Quality Flow for an exact replacement. I mean, exactly like what we pulled out would be sixty-two twenty-five. We talked about that for a while and he said, do you know your old pump is unreparable? And I said, all I can do is go by what they said. He says, get that pump back. He said, they are not a KSB dealer, we are, let's see it. I don't have it back yet, but I requested it and, and the rep said he would get it to us. So I think this is all information for you to absorb, but nothing we need to act on until I get that KSB pump back. And let the KSB dealer look at it and tell us if it's rebuildable or not. So long story short, I got an education that I didn't even ask for, but it was great out there. I think our system is definitely okay in the time being, we don't need to switch anything out, our check valves are operating okay. And I think the best possible scenario is just to see if that pump that got damaged is repairable or not. And if it is not, to go back in with the KSB replacement so that it's all apples to apples and we're not spending all the money to replace, basically overhaul the system and switch it to a different, to a different brand. If we wanna get rid of the cables, they can do that too, they can remove the cables and put a solid rail in if that's an issue. But after what they showed me out there, until those cables get damaged, I don't think we need to change it, so.
I think it's a good idea to stay with the same company. Only, let's don't have two or three vendors down there.
Yeah, yeah.
And those cables, playing really nice about the cables on the track, I don't know, I've never seen the track, but, you know, gotta remember too what it's sitting in. And whether it'll slide easy or not slide easy. Where the cables, you know it does, cause it, all it does is hook around them and you pull on them when they, you're trying to, well, the chain, you pull on the chain to get the seat.
I really, I really don't think, you know, we signed a maintenance contract with Iowa Pump.
You say we're tied to them for what, a year or two?
Yeah, we're tied with them for a year, I mean, and they're gonna do the maintenance and I think they're probably just fine at that part, doing that part of it. But I don't think we need to jump into switching our system over to what they're doing, because we won't necessarily stick with them in the future on the maintenance contract either. There's nothing holding us there.
Does, does, does KSB have a service?
Oh, yeah. The other thing that irritated me and part of it is the trucker in me, every time that Iowa Pump Works comes here, they are charging. And I don't care if they, I know the one night, they were, they spent the night in the whole one, they told me. But every time they come here, they're charging us, drive time of five hours from Ankeny, cause that's where they based, at a hundred dollars an hour. So we're paying their full rate for their tech, when he's sitting in the, in the seat of that pickup. And they're charging mileage on the truck, two-hundred-and-ninety miles, so three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars of payment we're making to them every time they come here to service. And I asked the guy from Quality Flow and he says, well, yeah, we have a trip charge, but it's just so much a mile. He says, I can't quote it to you off the top of my head, so I'll compare it, but, you know, five hours at eight-hundred-and-sixty-two bucks? I wish I could make that much money with my trucks, I wish, there's no way in heck. I mean, no way. So I, and I understand when that, that tech is not in the hole working on a pump, when he's in behind the wheel, he's not working on a pump. I get that, I totally get that. But I don't think those guys have any more special education than any of us have to do our job. I think they learned how to work on pumps and they learned how to take them in and out. So I have a personal issue with that, whether it translates to you guys or not, that's, that's your opinion, whatever. That, that bugs me a lot, so. But nothing about lift station, cause I think we just need to see if we got a fixable pump or not. Okay, working on, I've started working on getting snow removal equipment ready, cause obviously that's coming. Generator service guy was here in town the last couple of days. We do have a few issues, the battery was shot at the lift station and turns out it's because the little trickle charger was shot. We put a new battery in and I ran in town, got a battery tender, just like what was in it and put on it, everything is A-OK. Was a little low on antifreeze, he's not too concerned, it probably seeped out around some hoses, he tightened all the, all the connections, starts and runs beautifully. I just have to reprogram the, the switch to do the automatic exercise, which I have to wait. I want it to run Monday morning, so I have to wait till Monday to program it, I gotta do it at the time I want it to run. So that one will be fine, we still do not have the one at the fire station running. There was, it's a propane engine, little two-cylinder Honda, and there was a propane mixing chamber that he couldn't get any propane to flow through. So he was able to get a new one, not a big deal, he said it was readily available. And he's got propane flow, but now there's no spark whatsoever. So he's doing a little research, they don't see those Honda motors too often when they're doing these, these generator service contracts. So he's gonna research that and try and figure it out. But I'm assuming the coil went bad, cause he pulled both plugs out and couldn't get spark out of either side, so. I don't know, but he's working on it, so. And then the Kohler up at the, the big one up at the shop was great, did the, did all the service, everything looked fine. It appeared like the lift station one hadn't had anything done to it, he said, I can't be sure, but it almost looks like the break-in die is still in the oil. And I think that's two thousand and two model, so, I don't know. It's still, it didn't, the oil didn't look bad, it's only got a couple hundred hours on it, so. And I started it the other day when I was working with the, the switch and it sounds wonderful and starts right up and, and all that. So I think we'll be good to go once he figures out what's causing that fire station one not to fire, so. Cause it's got like a hundred and seventy-one hours on it, so that's nothing, but. Just something, we're talking about Roosevelt too, so just throw this in the memory banks and then maybe it falls under the, the goal setting session too. But had a few people mentioned to me about the, the traffic of kids coming from Naylor State's along Roosevelt to get to school. There's no sidewalk from Longworth to just short of Third Avenue on the north side of the street there. And there again, that opens up that whole sidewalk ordinance can of worms, you know, how far do you wanna push it and ask people to, to put sidewalk in? Or is there something we can do on the edge of the road, since Roosevelt's pretty wide right there? To make a little safer pathway for those kids to walk to school. Just something to think about and if you drive by there, you know, take a look and you'll see what I mean. But if you drive down Longworth in the, in the summertime, in the afternoon, you'll better stay under ten mile an hour, cause you're gonna be bouncing thirty kids off your car if you're not careful. It's, there's that many youngsters out there that are walking to, walking to school through there, so, just thought I'd bring it to everyone's attention. Got a new forty mile an hour sign south of town that we talked about last meeting, so you can actually see it in the dark now, so that's pretty cool. Got the one call in to put the stop sign in on Longworth and Howard coming out of the new addition. Once I get that in, I'll, I'll call the locate in to put the street signs up, because they came in from Iowa Prison Industries, so I've got them all. Might need a little help though, those ten foot poles, getting them driven in, I might have to have a hand on that deal, so. Let's see, we talked about Moonheart Street already. The Lions Club was brainstorming a little bit on how to light, get some lighting on the trail going out to the complex. We talked about as it was being put in, should we be burying conduit or something? We talked about as it was being put in, should we be burying conduit or something, trying to figure something out. And Michelle from Alliant Energy was here, uh, to look at the pole that we're gonna have moved to concrete this area. And I brought the project up to her, thought maybe there might be some kind of community project through Alliant. She went out and looked at it and she said, I know where your solution is. The power poles coming into town are on the, on the east side of the road. But as she said, if you put three or four streetlights on those poles, they will definitely illuminate that trail. But the biggest benefit is that's gonna start lighting up your entrance to town earlier to, to help your traffic slow down a little better coming into town. And it kills two birds with one stone. So, and if we go about it from that standpoint, there's no cost for the fixture and no cost for installing. Um, the kinda LED fixtures she's suggesting is twenty-four something a month. So i- if it was put up as a streetlight by the city, cause that's the deal that they do for you. Our utility bill from Alliant is X number of dollars for each fixture depending on its intensity and its usage. So, um, I guess I'm asking the council, if you're willing to put three to four streetlights up on the south edge of town, uh, to help light that trail and to light the entrance of town. And that's the last thing I have on my, uh, agenda, on my list, if you wanna talk about that.
You know, would those be the kind of lights that would shine over on the trail?
Yeah, they, she looked at it from that standpoint. They'd be just like these LED lights that we have downtown, except the ones downtown are low intensity. Since that's more of an open area, she would go with a, a medium intensity light. And it was her opinion that it would definitely illuminate the trail. It definitely would. So, but then you get the, like I said, the added benefit of lighting up the street coming into town and it throw a light on the lift station too. Um, you know, if you make sure one of them's on a pole right next to the lift station, then you got a little extra light if you're out there in the middle of the night working on that baby too. So, um, so yeah, it's, you're like, if you put four of them up, it'd be a hundred dollars a month is what it boils down to. So, but the nice part is for is that no cost for the fixture and no cost for the installation, cause that's where you pile up a bunch of money.
They replaced it more or less, they can't charge it if they aren't lit. So if the bulbs go bad, they replace the bulbs.
Yes.
Cause they're not lit, then you can't charge it.
Yeah, so, I mean, all it takes is approval from you guys if you're willing and I'll call her up and say, put four lights up.
That'd be a safety factor too, somebody walking that in that.
Yeah, cause really.
It sounds like a no brainer.
Yeah.
It's, it's like that we don't have a town until we're already in it anyway. Pretty much, I mean, it's, you're dark, you're dark all the way up to the vet, pretty much almost all the way up to the vets.
Well, that's the, the first actual street light really isn't until, uh, the driveway going into Dan McMerton's, the D and D. Um, the vet clinic has a light shining on the front of their building. And I think that's where I'd put the first one is right there on the other side of the pole. And then about every other pole till you get out to the corner with Old Quos, then it stops because there's no more poles. The poles turn and go up Old Quos, so, um, you know, and I think, I think the school. Oh, again, the majority of the way out there and, and you know, it's not Leland Osmondson's responsibility to light anything up. But he's got landscape lights and stuff out there. I mean, it's, it's not ideal, but you know, just his house being there is, is gonna give a little bit of, of glow too, you know? And I think the school's gonna have to think about maybe some more lighting. Uh, in fact, Danny asked me, if you guys approve this, she wants to piggyback when they're here doing it and get one of those lights put up more to, to light up the playground in the complex. Cause it is just pitch black back there. And if a family's out playing on the playground and it gets kinda dark then, and they're walking, they'd be really in the dark without something. So I think she's gonna get one put up at the, at the complex right away too. But if she puts any more up, it's gonna take poles, you know? Cause she just doesn't have that many poles to work with, like we have poles already there, so.
I, I will.
I'll second it. Can we do that without it being on the, can we do, approve something like this without it being on the agenda? I mean, I, I'm all for it.
I think it's like a maintenance sign.
Oh, okay, it's maintenance, okay, I'm sorry, that's my, that was my only question.
Put up four lights.
Right.
We have a second. Follows in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have, unless you got questions for me.
Okay, everybody's got their packet, their packets of goal setting? Cause the budget comes up, we're gonna post. You have some of the goals set, you know, just kinda wrote down here. Main street renovation, revitalizing, revitalization, Moon Street, Moonheart Street. Keep employees happy and healthy, fire station, screw stuff to welcome Albert to Albert Net signs. Do something with the green space, water lines, do attorney. Am I, N-I-M-S training, mining sewers, North Street or South Street?
I don't see all that above.
Something to just kinda look at.
I, I think Sharon was also looking at if you guys had something that she hadn't thought of, you know, to add to that list too, so.
Could this be, man? I was gonna say, could this be something good for, maybe us to, you know, I've looked it over and I thought about it, but maybe think on it more and, and maybe put our names on them and then just maybe turn them in here to the office for her to look at them and have them together for next meeting, something like that. And then there could be, it could be collaborated and say, yeah, like everybody in the council thinks this is like a number one priority, you know? Categorize them, that way we can kinda, we can sit here and, and discuss everyone. We all know what needs to be done. It's just, I think we all kinda have different priorities and different, um, how we want, you know, how we wanna progress maybe, where if we could get them all together and then have everybody, you know? Okay, this is what, you know, the majority of the council thinks should be number one, two, three. And then it's all together and then we can, you know, instead of our discussions going all different directions, we can really focus and I don't know, that's my opinion.
What's your, what's your? She, she saw, when she went to her last class, she saw a real positive thing out of having the goal. You know, they showed some examples of how some cities work through and, and she talked to me about it and I totally agree. And, and I think Dave has a point, if you get to think about it a little bit here and you have the list of what, what Sharon and I, most of them, you know, these things, she and I kinda, as we came across them, we threw them out there. Um, yeah, definitely feel free to add to them if there's something we're not thinking of and do the little prioritizing thing. Uh, putting a one, two or three on it. And then we'll have a lot better idea of what everybody thinks is the most important thing by next meeting for sure.
The other, the other thing is it might be such a thing that, that, um, okay, this has to get done next year. Okay, well, you know, this could maybe we could hold off until next year or the year after. You know, it's not a darn need.
Yeah.
And I think when we go through, that way we, I think are, are, are spending our money more effectively.
Um, and that, at that point, you throw the, the budget part of it into, cause obviously we have to, to make the budget work. It's just like, you know, we saw the number from Matt on Mood Hard. If, if we're gonna do, we all know that something needs to be done there. So you gotta figure out how you're gonna generate all this.
Don't we get our numbers on what we're gonna be getting from them? Isn't that December, we get those or?
I can't remember.
It's in those, it's in the early stages because we'd have to know approximately what we're gonna get. So when we can set, we don't, you know, five hundred thousand over budget, no, that's not gonna work, you know?
I think one big goal that Sharon was hoping to have here was so that when you got to that budget process, you knew where to put the money. You know what I'm saying? Like the discussion we had about taking care of Donald, where's it gonna come from? You know, Donald and Lori Drive, where's that money gonna come from? And if, if you have a better idea where you think you're going to go with that money, you can put the appropriate funds in the appropriate account as you're doing your budgeting, so that you don't have to do a scramble when, okay, yeah, we decided to do Mood Hard, but there's not enough money in the streets budget or, or whatever, or, you know? Whatever the case may be. I think that is probably the number one goal of this is to know how to budget so that you're.
And capital improvements.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, I think it'd be a good idea if you filled this out too.
Cool, did you put one in your packet?
I don't think you did. I didn't find anything.
Well, you can have mine, cause.
Yeah, she didn't give me those.
Yep, there you go. That's no problem. I, that, that is the number one goal of this is to, to make sure you're prepared on the budget side of it. And, and also to know if there's something that somebody feels, somebody on the council feels like maybe needs to be done that it just never gets brought up too, you know? If there's something you're seeing, write it down there on the bottom, put a priority number on it, so. It's, uh, except if it's fire, the city guy and the engineer, we don't know that. I'll accept those.
We have questions on that yet? Okay, part-time public works, do you have any on that?
Steven Craig, he interviewed tonight.
Interviewed two people. And I think we have made up our mind on the part-time man, John Arie. And our consensus was fifteen dollars an hour. Am I saying that right, Steve? I think it was, that's what we came to. So, I guess we'll leave it at that. I guess, uh, goes to what? You guys, we made our recommendation, you guys vote on that then at that point? Is that how this, I think that's the way it works. So I guess we're nominating John Arie for the position of part-time.
I would just mention that the other guy you interviewed is probably qualified, but he's, he's quite young and the insurance didn't, was not thrilled about someone that young being, you know, running the equipment, but said if that's what we wanted, he could, but it might, could possibly be a problem. So, um, so we had two good, one of the in that was we had two good guys to choose from. It wasn't like he was the only one that stepped up and, you know, only one that was worth interviewing, so.
Unless there's any other questions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion then to hire John Arie. Or is it fifteen dollars an hour?
Yeah, part-time on a.
Part-time basis.
As needed basis.
As needed.
Motion's been made, we hired John Arie, part-time, fifteen dollars an hour. Do we have a second, target? Go second then? Follows in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You have a motion to adjourn? We have a second? Follows in favor? At this time it is eight oh four.